Twenty-second City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting, would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in this court. All right, thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
All right, all right. So for our next item is Presentations. This evening, we will be recognizing Phoebe Hennegey upon receiving the Girl Scout Gold Star Award. Is Phoebe with us?
I'm not seeing her. I do see Paul Hennegey on the public side.
Okay, so I'm wondering maybe.
Let me see. Yeah, let me see if maybe that's her. Oh, there she just came on.
All right, welcome, Phoebe.
Hi.
Hi. All right, so we're going to issue your proclamation here. So whereas the Girl Scouts of America, whose motto is "Where Girls Grow Strong," is a character-building organization composed of young women who are seeking to prepare themselves as better leaders and citizens for tomorrow by developing these traits and strengths of character. And whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest award in the senior level of Girl Scouting that challenges girls to change their corner of the world with a seven-step project: identify an issue, investigate it thoroughly, get help, and build a team; create a plan, present the plan, and gather feedback; take action; and educate and inspire. And whereas for her Gold Award project, Phoebe Hennegey created an informative video called "Athletes Against Anemia" to increase awareness about iron deficiency anemia, which is a very common health condition among young student athletes. And whereas the special and unique honor of achieving the Girl Scout Gold Award was earned by Phoebe Hennegey of the Diamond Crest Service Unit. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Laura Palmer Lohan, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Phoebe Hennegey on the attainment of the prestigious Girl Scout Gold Award and commend her for her service and accomplishments in the nation's largest youth organization dated 22nd of February 2021. Congratulations, Phoebe, and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Are there any remarks that you would like to share with the council this evening?
Um, just that I'm super grateful that I've been able to be involved in Girl Scouts for so long. It's yielded like some of my best friendships and memories, and I was just really happy I was able to make it to the end and finally get my Gold Award, and I was super happy. It was about something I was personally very passionate about, and yeah, thank you.
Well, congratulations. That's a quite impressive accomplishment, and I'm sure you're helping many along the way. I really appreciate your being with us tonight. I'd like to invite my fellow council members to say any remarks if they so choose. Adam? Councilmember.
Mayor, thank you. Oh, am I unmuted? Oh, thank you. I just want to say congratulations, Phoebe, on your award, and thank you for all your service for the community, and appreciate all that you're doing. And it's great that you stuck with it the whole way. It's hard work, and congratulations.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Phoebe. As a mom of two athletes, I'd be really interested in reading your work. I don't know if you wrote up a report, but if you have time to send that over, I'd love to read more about your project, and congratulations. I know that was a lot of hard work, so well done.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, just congratulations, Phoebe. Quite an accomplishment, and it looks like a very valuable report. And all that good leadership you learned and honed, I'm sure you'll put that to good use. So thank you for your service in San Carlos.
And Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phoebe, congratulations. It's a great accomplishment. I love to see it when young people are working hard toward their goals, and best of luck to you, and congratulations once again.
All right, well, thank you so much, and good luck to you, Phoebe.
Thank you so much.
All right, so we will now move on to Council Communications and Announcements. Council Communications and Announcements are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Does anybody have any updates? Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one quick update. I attended the commute.org board meeting, and we read a presentation about the Highway 101 Express Lanes Project, which I'm sure many residents have seen taking place alongside the freeway. The public can learn more about this project and timing at 101express.com. Over the summer, there will be a public discussion about the toll policy and enforcement for the express lanes. So if you're looking to get involved, that might be something to check out. And I also wanted to give everyone a heads up that in order to use the express lanes as a carpooler, you will need to get a new Fast Track Flex toll tag that has a lever to adjust with how many people are in your vehicle. So nothing to do immediately, but this is coming, and I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a brief report. I attended my second Silicon Valley Clean Water meeting this morning, and because I used to be on the Caltrain Board, the comparison in terms of length of meeting was stark. Today's meeting was a total of 36 minutes, which, when you start at 8:00 in the morning, is really welcome. But one item to report, though, is that the budget has started off with a $2 million surplus that may fluctuate over the course of the year, but the district is handling its finances very well. And it also speaks well to the cities along the way that took some very difficult steps many years ago to raise rates when it wasn't very popular, but the Silicon Valley Clean Water is now solvent, and we're hoping that rate increases in the future will be far more modest than they were in the past. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. All right, looks like there are no other reports. So at this point in time, we will take public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
Yes, it does look like we have one for now. Sonia Elks, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. I just want to thank the City Council and Public Works for taking the time to re-look at the Arroyo-Cedar intersection and see what we can do to improve that for youth and bicycle safety. I also wanted to let the community know that the San Carlos Farmer's Market returns on March 7. The new time is from 9:00 to 1:00. It'll still be in the Industrial Arts District. There will be, as before, there will be free valet bike parking, and if anyone has any questions, the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring that and can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sonia. Crystal, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
No, I don't see any others.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move to the Consent Calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve City-- go ahead, Adam.
That's fine, Sarah, go ahead.
I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through I.
Second.
We have the ordinance adoption, which we customarily review the ordinance.
Sorry, I'll keep going. And Item J, adopting ordinance number 1570, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 15.04.080, Title 24, Part 6, California Energy Code with appendices, and Section 15.04.125, Title 24, Part 11, California Green Building Standards Code, Cal Green, to meet greenhouse gas emission reduction goals.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
All right. I see Councilmember Dugan's hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Consent Item H, the very generous gift of-- from the estate of William Russell of over $800,000, split evenly between our youth center and adult community center. And boy, what a generous gift, and just obviously reflected his love and passion for San Carlos. And I just wanted to pause for a moment and acknowledge that. And, you know, I'm sure those gifts will be put to excellent use here in our fine city, and I would certainly support any, you know, tribute or way of acknowledging those gifts that made sense to staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Those are very nice sentiments. Thank you for sharing those. I'm sure they're shared by the rest of council. I can see.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think I can see the smile on Amy's face from here.
Yes, that's a very lovely and generous gift. Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Okay. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rett?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move to Agenda Item 8, Reports to Council. Reports to Council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff, city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. This first report will be a report on the Satisfaction Survey. I believe Tara Peterson, you'll be providing that with Tim McLarnie?
Yes, I'd just like to introduce Dr. McLarnie. True North Research has done our survey since 2012, so we have a great history with them, and they do a terrific job each year. So without further ado, I'll introduce him and let him take it away.
Great. Hi, Tara, Goodie, Mayor, Members Council, Dr. Tim McLarnie with True North Research. And it's been my pleasure over the last decade to work with the City of San Carlos on various surveys of your community, many of which, as you'll see tonight, have used similar questions that we've asked in the past for tracking purposes. But each time we do this survey, we want to make it dynamic and address some of the topics of interest at the current time. And obviously with the pandemic, this was sort of a natural opportunity to change some of the questions in the survey, and I'll be able to share with you some of the results of the questions that were specifically designed for this year to give us some new information about how the past year may have impacted your residents. Just a little bit of background, we're a firm that specializes in doing this for other California cities. And to date, my business partner and I have worked on over 1,000 research studies for public agencies, and about 400 of the studies that we've done are what we call community satisfaction studies or citizen opinion surveys, where the goal is to really understand kind of how residents view the services that you provide as a city, give them an opportunity to weigh in on policy discussions, et cetera. So as I go through tonight's presentation, in addition to be able to share some of the results from past year's surveys for the City of San Carlos, I might also make mention of how the results for this year might compare to what we've seen in some other cities, and I just wanted to give a sense for the sort of reference base from which I'd be speaking. I also welcome questions from council as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference. I know with the Zoom kind of format, it sometimes works best just to leave them at the end. So I understand I can actually control this thing. I'm trying to see how I advance slides here.
If you just click on your arrow key, it should activate.
It is not.
It is not. Okay, I'll be happy to forward it for you.
Okay, great. If you can just forward to the next slide, please. So before we talk about the results, it's helpful to take a moment to review the methodology of the study. This was a survey that we conducted in January this year. We start out by-- from a database of all San Carlos households. We then do what's called stratified random sampling, where we will stratify by geography and then choose households at random for the survey. We use what's called a mixed method approach for the approach, where in the past, we would rely heavily on just telephone, right, or exclusively on telephone. Over the past several survey cycles for the city, we've transitioned to what we call mixed method, where we will recruit using multiple methods: mailed invitations, email, as well as phone. And then, once an individual has been selected and recruited, they can participate either by telephone, landline, or cellphone, as well as online to password-protected website. We actually set out to do about 400 interviews. That's what we're contracted for. Obviously, we're walking in the door with a lot more than that. One of the interesting-- although we always work hard to boost the sample size up as much as we can, one of the interesting sort of side impacts of the pandemic is because more people are at home, they have more time on their hands, they're probably a little tired of chatting with the people they live with, and want to talk to somebody else. And so the survey presents a great opportunity for them to reach out and have a conversation with somebody they don't live with. And because of that, we were able to walk back into the door with 720 completes, which is a great response rate. Now, because we have a random sample of 720 and not a census of all of your adult residents, it has what's known as a margin of error due to sampling. In this case, that's about 3.6%. What that means is we can be 95% confident the results that we'll share with you today are within about 3.6% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your adults. I will also mention that this methodology is sort of apples-to-apples, the same as the last several studies that we've done for the city. And so when I show you some comparison data, we're using the same-- we're using the same methodology, so you can actually have a direct apples-to-apples comparison over years. Next slide, please. Okay, so on to the results. We open up the survey by asking individuals to tell us how they would rate the overall quality of life in San Carlos. When they say it's excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor, here on the far left, you see the results to 2021. That is the current survey, and then obviously, we're tracking it back, going back to 2014. You can see in 2021, we had 90% or nine out of 10 of respondents rate the overall quality of life in San Carlos as excellent or good. That is actually the same-- actually a slight uptick in terms of the percentage that excellent when you go back to 2020. And by the way, that 2020 survey was conducted pre-pandemic. And so one of the-- I think the real striking things about these results is that despite the pandemic, right, and the way it's sort of turned our lives upside down in so many ways, San Carlos residents still have very fond of feelings about the overall quality of life in the community, and that has not changed over the past year. The other thing I'll mention, you don't see it here, but you'll see it in the full report, is if you break these results down across different demographic subgroups in the community, so depending on how long they've lived in the city, whether they have children in the home, gender, age, homeownership, as well as even the-- what the financial impacts of the pandemic have been on their household, what you see is very consistent, steady, high ratings for the overall quality of life in San Carlos. Across all of those subgroups, the range is from a low of 85% to a high of 95%. So this is a very consistent view of the city regardless of their individual's characteristics. Next slide, please. So after we ask about the overall quality of life, we like to follow up by asking them, if the city government could change one thing to make San Carlos a better place to live, what change would you like to see? This is asked in an open-ended manner, meaning we don't provide them with the list of options you see here on the slide. We get-- we allow them to tell us in their own words or write it down in the online survey in their own words. We then go back and look at those responses and group them into the categories that you see here. And what you can see is, at the top of the list here, we have limited growth and development, about 18% who mentioned that issue, followed by reducing traffic congestion at about 13%. You had about 12% who said, "Nothing really comes to mind." You also had another 7% or 6% who said, "No changes, everything's fine." So, you know, about 18% or almost 1 in 5 really didn't see a need to change anything, or nothing really was pressing enough to sort of pop to the top of their mind. Followed up that, you see improving addressing parking issues, about 8%, providing affordable housing at 7%, and improving public safety at 7%. If you look back over time, what's interesting is limiting growth and development has been the number-one issue in the community when we asked this question dating back to 2016, right? So it's always kind of been at the top for the last four years, four or five years. Reducing traffic congestion and addressing parking are perennial favorites in the top five as well. They tend to show up there. The providing affordable housing issue is new to the top five in the last two years, so that didn't appear on the top five before 2020, but it's been in the top five in the last two years. And so you're seeing-- and it's important to keep in mind also that you have-- this is the number-one issue that someone would say in response to this question, and you do see here, and you do see it in a couple other places in the survey, that, you know, you'll have some folks who think the affordable housing is really important, right? And then you'll have other folks who tend to feel that there's-- maybe not that it's not important, but that they have concerns about limited growth, or they have concerns about traffic congestion, everything. So there's a little bit of tension there that plays out here in some of the other questions. Next slide, please. So this next slide, you know, from a performance management perspective is arguably the most important, and it's the results of the question, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the City of San Carlos is doing to provide city services? Here, we're asking them to talk about your performance overall, right? We're not referencing specific service areas, and because of that, it can kind of be considered an overall performance rating for the city. And you see in 2021, you had 82% of your residents say that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide municipal services. You had about 12% or so who were dissatisfied, and 5% who were not sure. When you compare that to 2020, those results are strikingly similar. There were no statistically significant changes in the past year. That, I think, is actually really impressive, and I'll talk a little more about that at the end of the presentation. But again, considering the pandemic and all the challenges that has presented to public agencies in terms of being able to provide services, the fact that you've been able to sort of swim upstream over the past year and keep satisfaction ratings as high as you have is impressive. Okay, so these levels of satisfaction, like the perceptions of the overall quality of life, are also fairly widespread in the community. When you look across different subgroups, you tend to see pretty consistent patterns. Next slide, please. So that prior slide asked about overall satisfaction with the city's performance. Here, we now break it down into 22 specific service areas, and we ask essentially the same question: how satisfied are they or dissatisfied are they with the city's efforts to provide service? These are asked in a random order from-- but we sorted them here from high to low based on that combined percentage of folks who said they're either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, which are the dark green and medium green bars respectively. And as you can see, there's sort of a few tiers to the results. You had, for all but two of the service areas at the bottom, you had at least 2/3 of your residents say that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide the service. When you go back up towards the top of the list, you know, you have 96% of folks saying they're satisfied with the city's efforts to provide library services. Other top-ranked ones there are providing trash collection, recycling services, keeping public buildings and facilities clean and attractive, et cetera. As you move down, at the very bottom, there's two here on the list that are, you know, when you compare to the others, are lower in satisfaction. Provide affordable housing, that was at the bottom there, at about 48% satisfied, and then reduce traffic congestion on city streets. There, you had about 54% satisfied. If you look at these answers and you compare them to 2020, what you do see is there were four statistically significant changes in the past year. In terms of holding community-- special community events, satisfaction went down with that about 4%. Hard to hold community events in the last year for a variety of reasons, as we know. And then also providing safe streets, that one went down about 5%. But if you look at providing more public parking downtown and reducing traffic congestion on city streets, those both increased in terms of satisfaction by 7% and plus 15% in the past year respectively. So higher levels of satisfaction with your parking, as well as your efforts to manage traffic congestion on city streets. Next slide, please. Now, much of the survey is focused on quality of services, but we also take an opportunity in the survey to kind of gauge how do residents view their city government, right, in terms of local governance issues? And so for each of the statements at the bottom that you see there, we simply ask people to tell us whether they agree or disagree with the statements about San Carlos. And you can see that from left to right, you have about 79% who said that the city manages its finances well. You have 78% who said, "I trust the City of San Carlos." You had 68% who said that the city is responsive to residents' needs, and you had 62% who agreed that the city listens to residents when making important decisions. There are no statistically significant changes in the past year, so these have held steady throughout the pandemic. Next slide, please. So we did see a little bit of a downtick in the percentage of respondents who had had interactions with city staff in the past year. That's common to a lot of the surveys that we're doing for other cities, right? With the pandemic, there's just generally less opportunity to have interaction with city staff. But we still had 36% who had had some sort of contact with city staff in the past year. For those individuals, we asked them to rate staff in terms of how professional they are, how accessible they are, and how helpful they are. And what you can see here is you get about 9 out of 10 who said that staff is professional and accessible. You had about 8 out of 10 who said staff was helpful. There were no statistically significant changes in these ratings in the past year. Next slide, please. So, you know, I mentioned earlier that one of the changes in the last two years has been the issue of affordable housing sort of creeping up the list in terms of perceived importance. It's now in those top five of things that people say top of mind is the thing that the city could do to improve the quality of life. And we've seen, you know, other issues related to housing also sort of rise in general across the state. And so one of the questions that we included in the 2021 survey here was to ask residents to tell us, for each type of housing that you see there on this list, is there currently too little of this in San Carlos, about the right amount, or too much? And what you see is, at the top of the list, the two statements regarding affordable housing, housing that's affordable for middle-income families and housing that is affordable for low-income families. You've got about half of residents say agree that there's just too little of this in the community, with most of the rest saying the amount's about right. Beyond that, you get into accessory dwelling units. About 1/3 say there's not enough of those. Interim housing to help people try to transition from being homeless, also about 1/3, and on down. When you stare at these results a little bit, what you see is a pattern, which is housing that is programmed for a particular purpose, right, or a particular group. So affordable for middle income, affordable for low income, interim housing for transitioning out of homelessness, special needs housing, senior housing. That tends to get a higher percentage of folks say that, you know, there's not enough of this in the community. When you compare it to the actual physical structures of the houses that would be required to meet those needs, right, those tend to fall to the bottom there, which is condominiums, apartments with seven or more units, single-family townhomes, single-family homes, townhomes, et cetera. So there's a little bit of a tension between those who don't want growth in the community, right, and, but at the same time, a recognition that you need more housing for certain purposes, particularly affordable housing. And I'm guessing, when you look at that, there are some folks who think that maybe we should-- we could possibly create more affordable housing without actually adding housing, right, that you would be converting certain units and making them more affordable. But this is what I was saying about a little bit of the tension earlier, that there's a widespread recognition that affordable housing is a need, but when you get to the types of structures that would actually meet that need, there tends to be a little more pushback on some of those. Next slide, please. So one of the questions that we first started asking in 2016 was, in the past three years, would you say the pace of development in San Carlos has been too fast, about right, or too slow? And you can see that 2021 is the first year since we started asking the question that the percentage of folks saying that development is proceeding too fast hasn't increased, right? 29% in 2016 jumped to 50% in 2018 to 55% in 2021, and it has dropped significantly in the past year, down to 49%. And it has dropped significantly in the past year down to forty-nine percent. So a little, that's a sort of a interesting pattern. We are not sort of seeing that in some other communities, right? That we're still seeing sort of high levels of for communities that are growing that that there's a concern about that. But here we've seen a drop off in the last year. Next slide, please. So one of the sort of difficulties that the pandemic has created for most public agencies is, you know, they're they're taking an economic hit, right? You don't have some of the revenue sources and streams at the same level that you've had in the past. And consequently, you know, cities are having to make tough decisions, are having to cut some services, and they're having to prioritize what they spend their future dollars on. And so we took the opportunity in this community survey to ask residents, sort of inform them that the city doesn't have, has a limited budget, can't fund everything. And that, you know, your opinion as a resident will help the city make some of these priorities decisions during this difficult time. And so for each of the items you see there on the slide, we simply asked residents to tell us, should this be a high priority for city spending in the future, a medium priority, a low priority or not a priority? And those latter two categories are represented by the negative space off to the right. You can see here that there's kind of a two tiers to the results here. Not surprisingly, sort of public safety and public works were raised at the top of the list in terms of the percentage of folks who said it's either a high or medium priority, starting with fire protection services, infrastructure maintenance and repair, street maintenance and repair and police services, and then park and landscape maintenance, right? Those sort of take up the top five. Beyond that, you see that the percentage who said it's at least a medium priority goes down quite a bit. That isn't to say that these services aren't valuable from residents' perspective. It's just that, you know, when you introduce a sense of competition as we do in this question, you know, it sort of forces them to to choose because not everything can be a high priority. Next slide, please. So we would have been remiss in this survey not to include some questions that are deal directly with the pandemic and how it has impacted some of your residents' lives. And so we've got a few slides on on that. This first one, we asked individuals to tell us, have they or any other member of their household switched from commuting to working primarily from home during the past year? You can see that sixty-four percent of folks said they had at least one person in their household who is now working from home instead of commuting to work. We asked, we also asked whether they had had their, this is the middle bar, whether they'd had their work hours or salary reduced in the past year. You can see that's about a quarter, so twenty-four percent of your residents have taken that impact in one way or another. And then we also asked if they or anyone in their household had been laid off, furloughed or fired from their job during the pandemic period, and you can see about fifteen percent answered that in the affirmative. When you look at these results across your residents, you do see that the impacts of the pandemic haven't been felt evenly across all subgroups. Renters in particular were more likely to experience a reduction in hours and salary as well as a layoff or or being furloughed or fired. We also saw that households of teenagers also were more likely to be in those categories as well. Next slide, please. So we followed this slide up with a question about how their, how is their household's financial situation been impacted by the pandemic? Would they say it's improved, stayed about the same or gotten worse? You know, what's really interesting about this period, when you compare it to, say, the Great Recession, you know, if you may recall the Great Recession, the financial impacts of that were felt very broadly, right? Everybody sort of took it, especially if you own property, everybody took a hit in that. The pandemic period has really been picking winners and losers, right? That there's some people who are really taking it on the chin, and there's others that have actually seen their businesses and their jobs improve. What you find in San Carlos is you had about ten percent of your residents say that their household's financial situation has improved during this pandemic period. You had two thirds of which say that it stayed about the same, they haven't felt it one way or the other. And then we also had about twenty-one percent who said that their situation had gotten worse. And so, once again here, I'm sorry if the dogs are barking in the background here. I'm trying to calm that down. Hold on one second, if you don't mind. Sorry about that. I'm sure that's the first time I've heard dogs in the background of a Zoom call. So here again, we saw that the financial impacts aren't being felt evenly. And obviously, there's a really strong correlation between how people answer this question and how people answer the prior questions about taking salary hits or being laid off during this period. Next slide, please. So one of the other questions that was new to the two thousand and twenty survey had to do with childcare services. So we dug in on a couple of questions here. The first of which we asked them prior to the pandemic, first of all, we we filtered this to be of households that have children thirteen or under or under thirteen. So we were isolating folks who have kids of age that would potentially need childcare services. And we asked them prior to the pandemic in two thousand and nineteen, had they searched for daycare services in San Carlos? And then also, what about during the pandemic, right? Had they searched for daycare services? And you can see that prior to pandemic, about fifty-three percent said, yes, we had, you know, we had searched for daycare services in the city. During the pandemic, that dropped to about twenty-two percent. Again, that's just in the last year. And so some of that drop has to do with not just the pandemic impacts, but also the fact that you're dealing with, you know, a smaller group of people who would have searched for it in one year versus in in two thousand and nineteen perhaps. So next slide, please. We did also find, though, that there was a bit of an impact in the past year in terms of the ability to find daycare services. So we, this question was where we asked how easy, prior to the pandemic, how easy or difficult was it to find suitable daycare services for your child in San Carlos? And then we asked the same question for during the pandemic, how easier or difficult was it to find suitable childcare services? And you can see that all in all, even prior to the pandemic, only about, only about a quarter of respondents said that it was comparatively easy to find. You had most respondents saying that it's difficult to find with about twenty-seven percent saying very difficult. When you get into the pandemic, it just made things more challenging, with thirty-seven percent saying it's very difficult to find, forty-two percent somewhat difficult. And with about sixteen, seventeen percent who are saying it's comparatively easy. Next slide, please. So moving on to communication, I've got a couple more graphic slides and then we'll wrap up with a conclusion slide. We asked individuals to tell us overall, are they satisfied or dissatisfied with the city's efforts to communicate with residents through newsletters, the internet, television and other means? And what we see here in two thousand and twenty-one is you've got a little better than eight and ten respondents say that they're satisfied with the city's communication efforts. Got about one in ten to say they're dissatisfied and the rest being unsure. These numbers have not changed significantly since two thousand and twenty. This has been an area where I have, and I will tell you that the slope of downturn here is a lot flatter in San Carlos than it's been in some other communities, meaning it's it's been a challenge for even high performing cities to be able to reach out and communicate with residents as the sources for information have proliferated and as people's expectations have increased in terms of timeliness of news and information. It's just been, you know, a growing challenge for cities. And so to see that your numbers are really haven't stepped down hardly at all since two thousand and fourteen, when you look at your combined satisfaction scores is great. One of the reasons I think for that is, if you go to the next slide, when we look at San Carlos and we asked individuals to tell us, you know, what sources of information they use to find out about city news, events and programs, what you find is that four out of the top five sources are city sources, right? They're they're turning your information provided by the city. So the city newsletter, the Good Living Community Newsletter, sixty-four percent mentioned they rely on that for information about the news in in city. You had about twenty-eight percent who mentioned next door. But then you're right back into the city's website at twenty-five percent, twenty-one percent mentioned an email notification from the city. And then postcards, flyers and letters mailed directly to the home at seventeen percent. So that goes a long way, I think, towards explaining how consistent you've been able to maintain your communication scores because this is a little unusual. You don't see that a city-sponsored sources represent such a high percentage of the of the top sources on this list. Next slide, please. We did, though, take an opportunity to ask individuals for each of the communication methods you see there on the slide and just tell us how effective they are for the city to communicate with them, right? So we want to kind of stay on top of things and make sure we know as people's communication preferences change, the survey represents an opportunity for us to keep on top of that. And so you can see here at the very top of the list, email and e-notify were the number, was the number one source, followed by postcards, letters and newsletters, mail to the home, and then the city's website, and then followed up by social media like Facebook, Twitter and next door. By the way, the perceived effectiveness of email and e-notify went up five percent significantly in the past year, as did the city's website, it went up eight percent. So those two rose, we didn't see the only other, we did see a little bit of a downturn in town hall meetings, but again, a little hard to hold downtown hall meetings during a pandemic, but so otherwise there were no changes between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Okay, I think the next one is our final slide. Can turn to that? Great, thank you. So what does all this mean? I go into detail in the full report, so I'll just sum up here. And again, I welcome questions from council or comments from council after the slide. You know, I think the biggest takeaway from a performance measurement perspective is that, you know, despite the pandemic and everything it has thrown at us in the last year and how it has obviously impacted the city's ability to perform in a variety of ways, residents continue to be very satisfied with San Carlos as a community, as well as the city's overall performance. We saw that the overall quality of life, which was that first slide I shared with you and how consistent that had been over time, in terms of your overall performance in providing municipal services, that hasn't changed significantly in the past year. And we saw high marks for customer service provided by staff as well as in terms of city resident communications. In a normal year, that's a good thing to see that you're holding steady at the high levels that you are. In a year like we've had in the past twelve months, you are really swimming upstream, right? You're having to kind of hold your ground against a lot of challenges that aren't normally there. And so I think that that's something that is, you know, should be looked on with some pride there at the city because you've done a really good job weathering this period so far. There are some particular areas of strength and or improvement in the past year that are worth noting, and those are the bullets that you see there. I didn't have a slide on the bike safety, but I will say that the bike loops are something that you did have significant improvement in perceived safety associated with biking in the community in part in response to the bike loops. And like any customer satisfaction study, it should not just be about, you know, how are we doing today? But also, where do we have opportunities for improvement in the future or where might some priorities be for us looking forward? And those are the bullets that you see there on the slide below on the third tier there. You know, it isn't that residents aren't satisfied with some of these areas. You know, some of them, they're actually quite satisfied. But when you look at how they talk about what the funding priorities should be in the future, when you look at their comparative satisfaction ratings relative to some of the other services that are there, these are the opportunity areas that sort of pop out from the survey. And so with that, I appreciate you sticking with me and I will end my presentation. I welcome questions from council if there are any.
Thank you so much, Timothy, much appreciated. Any questions from council? I can't tell who went first, was it?
Ron can go first.
All right, so if everybody could just do a couple of questions each and that way we can where we can, so Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, I was gonna let you go first, but that's okay. So Timothy, thank you. This is a very good presentation. First of all, you said seven hundred and twenty people completed the survey. How how does that differ from past surveys?
We've always pushed to have that sample size be higher in your community, so we've always overdelivered. I'm looking right now. So we had seven twenty this year, seven forty-four in two thousand and twenty, five sixty in two thousand and eighteen. We were able to do seven fifty-four in two thousand and sixteen, it was four hundred and ten in two thousand and fourteen. So this, there's been three years where we've been able to exceed seven hundred.
Okay, that's good to know. I think in prior years, if I'm not mistaken, there was a category or a slide on how satisfied people were overall with policing services. Do you remember that question or am I confusing it with one of our law enforcement surveys that are reports that we've done in the past?
So we do have a question in the survey, it's kind of buried in that long list where we were asking about satisfaction with various city services, there were twenty-two different services listed there. And we are, but it's broken up a little bit. We have satisfaction with provide police services, that checked in at about eighty percent satisfied. Right above that, maintaining a low crime rate, it was a little higher in terms of satisfaction. So we didn't, we sort of broke that down into a couple of different items.
Okay. And my last, my last question, you mentioned fire protection services, I think that was pretty high on the list. When, when that question was asked, were people's perception just on generally on preventing fires or was there a mention of wildfire in there? That's something that we focused on, so I'm wondering whether or not that the issue of wildfire came up from the residents.
So we had provide fire protection, prevention, emergency medical services. We kept the wording of that the same because we wanted to be able to track the past years, so we didn't modify it to include wildfire. I will tell you that when you look back over time on that particular item, it's ranged from about ninety-three percent to ninety-six percent satisfied going back to two thousand and fourteen. So you've always had this really high level of service with that. We did ask about, I think this is a relatively new one that started in we, oh, I would say, we did ask something about the city provided resources and facilities available during PG&E power shut offs. That's new to this cycle, it has to do with wildfire, but it's not specifically asking about addressing wildfire. It's sort of like, how do we deal with, you know, with the power when it gets turned off and notifications around that?
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan, and then we'll go to Adam Rack.
Terrific. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, Tim, a nice report, really just served it up nicely, really oriented me on a lot of issues in town, so thank you for that. One, just kind of observation, wow, you know, the COVID impacts, if you think fully twenty-five percent or so of our residents have lost income in this past year due to COVID and a fully fifteen percent have someone in their house that's actually lost a job. So that I just found that very sobering and just wanted to kind of underline that that, you know, COVID has definitely had deep impacts in our community. That translates to several thousand jobs lost in our town here. The, my question is really around benchmarking, so very useful, obviously, to see the benchmarking year to year. Tim, are there any resources, and I know, you know, you don't get hired by everybody, but are there any use resources we have or we can be more specifically benchmarked against, you know, peer cities or neighboring cities or maybe even just against regional results? So we can get kind of a sense with a little more broad perspective?
Yeah, I mean, we, as I mentioned, we've done these types of studies for, you know, probably close to four hundred times at this point for over time, right? So not everybody is doing them all on the same sort of wavelength, but, you know, we can certainly, you know, I generally sort of make reference to how that your results compare to what we might other see in other cities. If there are specific questions like overall satisfaction with providing city services, you could probably, you know, we could easily come up with, say, twenty different sort of benchmarks to be able to look at if if that's of value. I've always kind of looked at these surveys as being, you know, first and foremost, you're comparing against yourself over time, right? That's the most important thing is how do we do in the past? How are we doing? How are we, you know? How are we doing? How are we, you know, are we able to sort of manage, you know, our resident satisfaction and improve over time ideally? Or, you know, you know, if something's dropping, how do we deal with that? That's really the value is sort of looking back over time and comparing over cycles. But if there's an interest in looking broadly and maybe getting a few other cities to benchmark off, we, you know, we could probably do that. There is known, ICMA has a survey that they do, or at one time we're doing with cities around the country. The problem is it's one of these one size fits all, doesn't fit anybody particularly well surveys, right? So it's very templated. You don't get to change any questions. You don't get to tailor to your city. It, you just have to sort of adopt the questions that were there. I used to see more of those around. I haven't seen as many of them in recent years.
Okay, no, thank you for that. Just was curious to your reaction on that. And then finally, I just another observation. You know, very glad to see that our community has been relatively positive in our communication as a city over time, and it doesn't surprise me that other cities have have seen that drop off more than us. So we've made a good effort there, but I do think society has shifted and just the tempo of information and the expectations really have grown. So I just, you know, observe that as a challenge we have to keep leaning into as a city. We've had some, you know, issues of late where I think communication has been pointed out to us. So I just also observed that how strong our newsletter is. That was definitely the furthest right bar on that chart. I always think that maybe the website's the way to go, but that's a good learning how effective that that newsletter is. So, you know, I would just say as a city, if we feel there are things that need to be further communicated, really leaning into that newsletter and maybe adding a page or two to that might be the way to go. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tim, thanks for the great presentation. Is it, Crystal, can you go to slide 18? I just had a question on the communications. I want to just reference that. And the effectiveness, can you, Tim, I just wonder, looking at from year to year, the last couple of years, the effectiveness of kind of social media, has that, has that shifted, changed? Is that gotten better, worse? Where I just want to, curious how that is, has been as a tool for us over time?
Yeah, let me turn to it here. Back to it. So yeah, the social media back in 2014, when everybody had flip phones, was 8.6% perceived effectiveness. And it's basically climbed up and from about 2018 on, it's been about a third in terms of perceived effectiveness. So you're gonna get, I don't know, it's interesting. I'm curious to see how much more leverage we're gonna get on social media in this respect with cities. Because I just, even though over time, what we have seen is that the digital divide that used to sort of separate folks based on age, right, the older folks who are wanting printed sources of material, they didn't pay attention too much to social media and digital forms. That has actually changed a lot in recent years for certain channels. And in fact, this year, for example, we saw that email and e-notify was not only the overall perceived to be the most effective method of communication overall, it was actually the most effective method in all age groups, right? And so now we have seniors that are leaning slightly towards email and e-notify as their number one, which is not to say again that postcards, letters and newsletters are important. I think they are and they still are valuable, but it's sort of striking to see that even among seniors, we're now seeing the digital forms at the top of the list. So social media has come up, but it's sort of plateaued over the last three years or so. And I've seen that in a couple of other communities as well.
Great. Thank you. That's the only question I had.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one question and then one comment, if that's all right. Dr. McClarny, thank you so much. I love diving into this data. I always look forward to this survey. It's very helpful. My question for you is regarding affordable housing, and it kind of dovetails with what Councilmember Dugan mentioned, and I'm wondering, I, you might not have this data handy, but is affordable housing cracking the top five list in other communities surrounding us as well? Since this is such a regional issue, I'm just, I'm curious if this is coming up in other communities.
It really is. You know, it's interesting because I've had the experience of doing this for 20 plus years, right? And I've been able to see the ebbs and flows of issues that have happened and you know, there's a period where up until a few years ago, where when you talked about affordable housing, it would have been, it's way down the list. And what you had at the top of the list was limited growth and development, right? There was a real sort of, we don't want more housing. We want to keep things the way it are. And you know, you just didn't see it very much. And what we have seen statewide, first it was the homelessness piece, right? Really sort of jumped up and started grabbing people's attention around the state. I have had a few communities down here where you ask, what's the most pressing issue in the community? And homelessness is top of the list, bar none. But then in the last few years, that's sort of transitioned into not just homelessness in terms of of that, but also just affordable housing in general. And so you're not unique in the sense that affordable housing is jumping up the list. I also am sort of mentioned that there tends to be a little bit, when you're reading these numbers, especially that most important issues question, remember you can have different people in different categories, you would, right? And so some people are going to be gung ho and recognize the need for more affordable housing. You're also still going to have some of those folks who think, I just want to keep our community the way it is. I don't want to see another house built, right? So it's sort of balancing those two things together, I think is a challenge as a city.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And then just the quick comment that I wanted to make is I really appreciated all the data on childcare and noting that a household's financial situation during the pandemic was correlated with the need for daycare, with households that experienced financial hardship during the pandemic, also being more likely to have searched for daycare in San Carlos both before and during the pandemic. And that during the pandemic, just a whopping eight and 10 rated the challenge of finding suitable daycare in San Carlos is very difficult or somewhat difficult. So fascinating to me, and it reminds me, and I'm sure all of us, that economic recovery for so many of us, but especially for those who are struggling the most, depends on finding suitable childcare. And I'm just so glad that the city has kept support for childcare as a strategic goal for the year. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well said. Thank you for drawing attention to that important issue. And also appreciate Councilmember Dugan's remarks with respect to the number of people who have been financially hurt by the pandemic with respect to job loss and that type of thing. And I'm just wondering if, and maybe Jeff, this is a question for you. Can you talk to us a little bit about what you're hearing from our core agencies with respect to demand for services? I know we've done some work in the past to try to shore up and, you know, make appropriations to some of our community organizations to help those in need. What are you hearing right now?
As we've checked in with agencies in the last couple of months, we're hearing that our contributions are still out there being put to work. We've reminded those agencies that the city council, when they approved those expenditures and those funds that you wanted to know in advance of the money running out. So you'd have the opportunity to make a decision in advance to add more funds to those. So we will continue to have those conversations and check in for our community at large. Certainly, you know, we've, we've heard and seen the increase in food banks. Other services, I know for the county, mental health services has been on the rise countywide, and I think that correlates both statewide and nationwide in terms of what we're hearing. But it's something that we'll continue to monitor and of course, bring back to you if there's a potential need for additional resources.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. So the other, the other observations I wanted to make here were around this, you know, the increase with respect to people's perception around bike safety. That was remarkable to me, given the fact that for the most part, what we've done there is really just elevated the conversation around, you know, biking and walking in San Carlos and adopted a master plan and put in place the bike loops. And I know that there's more work to be done. But it strikes me that, you know, perhaps maybe just the art of conversation around the interest around alternative forms of transportation in the community is enough to create awareness and educate people around how to be aware of pedestrians and bicycles. So, and I know pedestrians weren't cited in this, but in my mind, they kind of, they kind of go together. The other thing I noted too is that the funding priorities in terms of what the community expressed to us does seem to align very well with our strategic goals that we'll be talking about later this evening. So that was reassuring. And then just, you know, to end on a positive note, what I, what really struck out at me, and I know this has already been mentioned, but the fact that one in three of the respondents had had interactions with the city was really quite high in this, in this report out of the 700. And on top of that, the fact that the satisfaction levels remain despite all of the challenges that we know, you know, the staff went through this past year. I know council's been working very hard too as well, but there's five of us and many more of them. I'm going to give a shout out to staff for their remarkable Herculean and heroic efforts this last year to keep everything running so remarkably well despite all of the challenges. So with that, I don't see any additional hands raised. So Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
Yes, it does look like we have one hand raised. Sonia Elks, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. What a terrific survey. Thank you so much for doing that. I makes one as a resident very proud of my city and of my staff and my council. I'm thrilled with the results. I'm happy to be living in a city of good living. I wanted to ask a specific question of Timothy, and that was, I remember, is the raw data of the wording of the questions and the results available to the public? Because I remember a very specific question, do you feel safe biking in San Carlos? And I didn't see that come up in the survey, and I wondered what the numbers of people, there were like three or four questions in that. I just wondered to see if we could get the raw data on that.
Yeah, so the, for the PowerPoint presentation for the council meeting, we always kind of pick and choose what questions to present simply because I'll go on for an hour talking and nobody wants to be there that long. But the full report has the, all the questions and all the responses, and we'll probably also show some breakdowns by different subgroups. So that information should be in the report.
And I can, I can mention that it should be posted on our website tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sonia. Crystal, are there any more members of the public who wish to speak?
No, no other members.
All right. Well, thank you so very much for the presentation and illuminating us on how our community is doing and what they need from us. It was very enlightening.
Well, thank you for the opportunity as well.
All right. So the next, Jeff, I believe you're going to provide us a report on COVID response?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. If I can get the slideshow up. This will be a quick report. Crystal, my, I'm not able to advance slides like I normally do either. Thank you. Okay, so we just wanted to touch base and remind the community that the COVID-19 testing site at Central Middle School is continuing on Thursdays from 1:00 to 6:30. Community members can get free walk-up COVID testing. Both children and adults are eligible at this location. Appointments must be scheduled through Curative at the website listed here on the slide, cur.tv backslash San Carlos. And prior, we had reported to council that the city was working with the school district and Curative to look for an alternative site should schools reopen. However, Curative has worked out the situation with Central and the principal there so that that site will continue even when schools return to in-person learning. So that won't change, which is good news. So everybody can keep getting their tests and we can keep lowering that infection rate and try to get back to normal. Next slide. We wanted to announce the Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program. Applications open today for this program. Restaurants, breweries and wineries can get grants up to $10,000 to qualifying establishments in San Mateo County. The grants are meant to cover expenses required to ensure continued operation during the pandemic. Examples of these would be rent, payroll, facility type costs. The application portal opened today and will go through March 8th. For more information on this particular program, you need to visit smcstrong.org backslash restaurant relief. That's smcstrong.org backslash restaurant relief. And I think that concludes our presentation and update. I would add that we're hearing that we may move down a tier, which is good news, into the red tier possibly on Wednesday. We don't know exactly what will be allowed if we do move into that tier. So we're waiting to see if our numbers countywide justify that. And if they do, what the new conditions will, will be promulgated by the county, and we'll make sure that council and the public is aware as soon as we're aware. So fingers crossed that we have some more good news related to that later this week. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for city manager on this item? All right, seen none. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
No, no.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, the next item is, let's see, new business, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the Chilton Park Improvements Project, awarding the project, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Marina Landscape, Inc. of Orange, California in the amount of $403,804 and authorizing the expenditures of a contingency in an amount of up to $51,414.60. So Amy, I believe you're going to be presenting on this?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, if I can, I just, I happen to live on Chilton Avenue and very close to this park. So I'll be recusing myself and tuning out right now. Thank you.
All right, all right. We'll have, maybe Crystal can text you when we're back in and when we're completed with this item. Thank you, Councilmember Dugan, for letting me know.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that, Amy. Please proceed.
That's all right. Good evening, Mayor Permer Lohan, Vice Mayor McDowell, and fellow council members, Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. Good to see you guys tonight. Crystal, go ahead. Next slide. So tonight we will be reviewing the Chilton Park Improvements Project. So just to go back through the timeline and history of this project, our community input process began in July of 2018 to develop a master plan for Chilton Park. We held two initial community input meetings, each with approximately 30 residents in attendance. Through feedback and input from these community meetings, a conceptual design of the improvements to Chilton Park was developed. This concept was then presented to the Parks, Recreation and Culture Commission, and improvements were unanimously recommended by the commission in February of 2019, and then approved and adopted by city council on April 22 of 2019. The construction documents were then prepared and were finalized in February of 2020. Unfortunately, at that time, due to the delay in the allocations of the Prop 68 per capita grant funds, we had to delay the construction just about a year. So with the current timeline, we are anticipating construction to begin in April and conclude in late summer. Next slide. The budget for Chilton Park is funded by the Park and Lou Fund 27. This budget includes both design and construction. The allocations for San Carlos's allocation of the Prop 68 grant funds is $178,000, and that will be used towards this project. Next slide. So now in the next few slides, I'll take you through some of the new park improvements and amenities, which include an accessible upland trail, a new small tot play area, and amenities, which include an accessible upland trail, a new small tot play area, a new drinking fountain, trash receptacle, and dog waste bag dispenser, an accessible route to this gathering area, which is adjacent to, if you're familiar with Chilton Park, this large rock that happens to be on the site, an interpretive panel that you see there on that bottom left picture, hillside steps coming up from Bayview Drive, and a new habitat plantings throughout the park. Next slide. So right now, I'll try to do my best to virtually navigate you through this master plan and the plan for the park. So if you can kind of see, the top is Sequoia Court and then Chilton Avenue from the bottom. It kind of cuts the park into, right now, we're seeing a left and a right. So to take you on the left-hand side, what you'll see is that new accessible upland trail or pathway that can take you through the park. The large gray area is the existing needle grassland, which will remain. That was a sensitive plant species that must remain. If you can see that little brown triangle that's kind of right in that center of the park, that's where the new tot play area will be located. And then just below that, a drinking fountain. And then taking you to the right side of this of this diagram of this concept, on the bottom is Bayview Drive. And so you can see those the stairs kind of going up into the park, with then followed by some seating and benches along that path going up and then towards that rock. So if you see, it's kind of right in the center of your picture of your computer, that is the existing rock feature. And that was one of the, a lot of comments from the residents were like, this is where the crowd draws, the crowd, the kids and the neighbors that come to this park. It's just this feature of this park that people are drawn to. And so to kind of play off that existing amenity and features, we have this gathering areas, you can see, kind of smaller or boulders that will kind of encircle that rock to kind of create a casual gathering area and gathering space. There's existing trees will remain, as well as some new trees. And then on that Chilton Avenue entrance, there'll be some new ballards that bring people into the park, separate that space of residential and park space, and then also some new plants. Next slide. And then here's some more visuals that you can kind of see that the new amenities will bring. The top right is that tot play area feature, which incorporate a really natural feel and look, a lot of wood piece elements that will be incorporated into the play space. On that left-hand side, you can see those stairs just headed up from Bayview Drive. And then that bottom right picture, you can see the gathering area with those, you know, larger boulders, smaller than the rock, but larger boulders that will create this space for for people to gather kind of more informally. And next slide. So the project was advertised at the start of the year on January 11, and bids were opened on Friday, February 5, 2021. There were a total of 15 responsive bids and four bids that were submitted after the deadline in the project specifications. These four bidders submitted bids late because of an error by the city's advertiser, ARC, who incorrectly listed the bid due date and bid opening on their advertisement. However, the project specifications and the city website correctly stated the bid due date and bid opening. Therefore, those four bids were deemed non-responsive and remained sealed. So as you see here on your screen this evening, the top line is the engineer's estimate at just under $425,000. And then you see the three lowest responsive bidders, with the lowest being Marina Landscape Incorporated. So next slide. Recap what Mayor Permer Lohan introduced us with. So the action before you this evening is approving the plans and specifications for the Chilton Park Improvements Project, C1905, awarding the Chilton Park Improvements Project, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Marina Landscape Incorporated of Orange, California in the amount of $403,804, $403,804, and authorizing the expenditure of a contingency budget in the amount of $51,414.60. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Thank you for the presentation, Amy. Any questions from council for Amy Newby, Parks Director? Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amy, I'm just wondering what you did to the rock. It sure was a lot bigger when I was a kid.
Nothing wrong. I'll meet you out there one day.
I had a lot of fun playing on that as a kid. We always thought that there was gold on that rock, but we never found any. So anyway, great job. Thank you. And I really do like the plans. I think they are going to be a nice improvement.
Yeah, I'm happy to get it started or happy to get the construction started now.
That's all.
Right. Anyone else? Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Amy, the hard work on this. It's looks beautiful, and I love the variety of elements that have been included, especially keeping some natural features of the park in play. So people are able to kind of appreciate the history, right, and the nature that already exists, which is which is really nice. See no additional questions from council at this time. Crystal, are any members of the public who wish to comment?
Yes, we do have one speaker, Chris Frangos. You should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
Hello?
Hello?
Hear me?
Good. Yes. Good evening, Chris.
Yeah, I live next to the park. I'm on the Sequoia side. And I had a couple of questions. Basically, they were saying that they're going to be changing our fence, I think, because we have a gate that goes out to the field. And I think they were going to be removing the gate and putting a new. And I was just wondering what that entailed. And also, we were wondering if they're going to do anything with the eucalyptus tree because that tree has gotten worse. We're directly affected by it. It's right on our property line. In fact, a lot of the limbs are overhanging our property. So we're wondering if they're going to do any kind of trim job and see what they could do because the roots also are coming into our to our yard because that's where they've been getting its getting its water from from our yard. But those are the two main things I was curious about.
Hi there. Yes, there are sections of the fence throughout the perimeter of the park that will be replaced. And so, you know, I apologize, I don't know your exact address. But if you were contacted early, you know, or last year, then that will be part of the fence that will be replaced? We were not contacted. We're at 61 Sequoia Court. 61. Okay.
Right next to between the eucalyptus tree and the rock.
Okay, I can follow up with you on that. In terms of the eucalyptus tree, we did have that tree assessed by an arborist, and there was not a recommendation to remove or to trim or prune it back. But that was one of the first things we had done was assess that tree. There are no plans to then remove it in this project.
Because the tree's going to keep growing also. And it's already, we were going to put solar in, and the tree basically covers our solar roof. So we weren't able to do solar. But the tree will keep growing. So we're just very concerned because of the shallow roots in that park. It's solid rock. You go down five feet. So the
So it may be a separate issue, but we were wondering if this might be a time to consider doing something about that tree before it causes problems with our yard any further than it is.
May I give you my contact information and we can, and I can just give you my email address?
Yeah.
It's my first initial and last name. So Anewby, A-N-E-W-B-Y at cityofsancarlos.org. And we can maybe touch base tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frangos and Amy. So all right, any comments or discussion at this point?
Through the chair, we do have one more public comment.
All right. Thank you.
Adam Frymore. You're up next. There you go.
Hi, great. Yeah, my name's Adam Frymore. I live on Chilton Avenue. And, you know, thanks for having me be able to speak tonight. And I, Amy, I really appreciate all the effort that went in to get the input from members of the community into this master plan. I think it's really helpful. You know, I think one thing, Amy, if you remember, obviously, I think there's a lot of, we wanted to keep it rustic and keep the theme or the essence of the park alive. And I think the plans, as I know, as I see them, look like they sort of, you know, incorporate that. I guess one area I was concerned about, and in your little concept pictures, they didn't have it. But in the design that you guys forwarded out for this meeting, they did, was the incorporation of both a concrete structure in the center, in the right when you entered the park, and also rubber, a rubber surfacing area. And I just wonder if that's, that was, if that's really at the, you know, what we were trying to get at. And that's what we want long term, to keep this park sort of, you know, our natural resource sort of more, you know, untouched and open. So my question, Amy, was that, is that, sorry, did I misinterpret the renditions of the park that were sent out?
Possibly, yeah. We don't have a concrete structure. And there is, if you're referring to the rubberized play surfacing that you see typically under some of our playgrounds, that is not to be included.
Great. That's reassuring because it was listed as a rubber area on the official schematic that was sent out for this meeting. So that was my main concerns. I think otherwise it's great. So thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure I understood. And if there is concrete or rubber, rubber matting, I sort of, you know, I just wonder, I question if we were going to be regretting that decision in the future. So appreciate my time here.
Great. Thank you. Crystal, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
No, there are no others.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank Amy for all the work on this and looking forward to supporting this. I think it's a great improvement and looking forward to seeing the finished product earlier, later this year.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Anyone else? All right. At this point, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-2021-
16.
16, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the plans and specifications for the Chilton Park Improvements Project, C1905, awarding the project, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Marina Landscape, Inc. of Orange, California in the amount of $403,804, and authorizing the expenditure of a contingency in an amount of up to $51,414.60.
All right. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Crystal, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan is recused, and Mayor Permer Lohan?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like me to go ahead and notify?
All right. So this next new business item is consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting the City of San Carlos 2021 Strategic Plan. And we will be taking a presentation from Assistant City Manager Tara Peterson, I believe.
It's me. So Crystal, I'm going to give it a try to move the slides forward, but
I'm just going to help you progress it. Something's going on. I'll help you.
All right. So this is the strategic plan for 2021. So the role, just briefly, is that it's to identify current issues, needs, and interests that are of strategic importance to our community. It requires that we focus, both as elected officials and staff, on issues that have an urgent impact and that are complex. It should be noted that the strategic plan doesn't include a summary of what city services are. And finally, the strategic plan establishes goals that will address these strategic issues now and into the future. Next slide, Crystal. So the development of the plan includes, this is an annual process that includes the city council and city staff meeting and facilitated work sessions. The plan includes the development of the city's mission, its vision, its core values, the strategic goals and objectives for the next year, and then the detailed work plans to accomplish these goals. The development of the plan requires that we use our knowledge and understanding of each participant in the process of what is important strategically to the community. And council members represent the needs and interests of our residents. While management staff are trained in local government management services, so together we develop a strategic plan that best serves the entire community. So the mini-retreat was held in late 2020. And then we held the council and management team retreat in January of 2021. And two weeks later, we followed with a management team retreat where we developed the draft objectives and work plans that are part of this package this evening. And this evening, we plan to, which we're trying now, is to present it to council for approval. Crystal, so I just wanted to, and so I'm going to read these verbatim because every word means something to the council. So the mission is the City of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities to its residents in an equitable, sustainable, transparent, responsive, and friendly manner to foster an inclusive, safe, and healthy community now and in the future. The council's vision is the City of San Carlos will continue to lead with confidence into the future as a desirable, vibrant, equitable, inclusive, and business-friendly community admired by all, as a great place to live, learn, work, and play. Next slide. Thank you. The core values, which are not in any particular order, are fostering a safe, diverse, welcoming, and engaged community that recognizes the importance of social equity, ensuring fiscal responsibility and the sustainability of San Carlos's resources, infrastructure, and social, I'm sorry, social-cultural environment, protecting our physical environment from the threats of climate change, recognizing and respecting the needs and challenges of the community, demonstrating high ethical and professional standards, including high-quality customer service, leading and managing effectively by engaging the community, thinking strategically, remaining proactive, and planning for the future. And finally, supporting the well-being of employees, investing in their development, and aligning staffing and resources with the demand for city services. Next slide. So the strategic goals, before I begin, I just wanted to mention in your packet, unfortunately, I had included numbers next to these, each of these goals, which indicated a priority order. They are not in any particular order, and it has been adjusted. So they're just bullet points. So the first is new to this year. This is the downtown goal. The City of San Carlos will work with residents, property owners, business owners, committees, commissions, the Chamber of Commerce, and all other interested members of the community to develop a plan to understand and ensure that the downtown meets the needs of the community and businesses now and into the future. The next is the East Side Planning Initiative. The City of San Carlos will be proactive in planning for future changes in land use, transportation, and economic development, including proposed market-driven development projects and the assessment of potential impacts and opportunities. Next slide, please. Thank you. The next is housing. The City of San Carlos will effectively, I'm sorry, actively encourage and support the creation of housing to provide a safe, inclusive, diverse, and affordable supply by facilitating development of housing for all income levels. Mobility, traffic, and transportation infrastructure. The City of San Carlos will actively pursue plans and strategies for improving mobility, traffic, parking, transportation- for improving mobility, traffic, parking, transportation infrastructure and street maintenance, while encouraging alternative modes of transportation to provide efficient, safe and effective movement throughout the city. Next slide, please. Thank you. Childcare and youth programming. The City of San Carlos will encourage and support the creation of childcare facilities and promote access to youth programming. Fire, public safety and emergency planning. The City of San Carlos will continue to prepare for public safety emergencies such as wildfire, earthquake, flood and other potential community emergencies by developing and implementing risk management, risk mitigation and reduction strategies. And finally, climate change. The City of San Carlos will support sustainability initiatives and address climate change. Next slide, please. So with that, we established objectives and work plans under each of these goals. So for the downtown goal, there are three objectives. And you'll notice at the end of each of these objectives, there's a number of tasks. So if you were to look at the work plan detail, you'll see how many tasks or what, and what is included in each of those. So for objective one, we have create a framework and inform the community. Objective two is to determine staff resources and budget needed to develop the plan. And objective three is to develop a scope of work to create a downtown plan. Next slide, please. For the East Side Planning Initiative, there's one objective and one task, but it's a big one. Prepare a plan to address changes in development patterns and the influx of jobs. Next slide, please. So for the housing objectives, we have three. Increase the number of below-market rate housing units to meet local and regional housing requirements, such as regional collaboration, grant programs, acquisition and new development. Continue to develop and prepare a focused general plan update that includes the housing element, the safety element and the land use element to meet council direction and state mandates. And objective three, facilitate completion of projects currently underway. Next slide, please. Mobility, traffic and transportation infrastructure. Objectives are five. First is to identify and implement alternative modes of transportation. These are non-vehicular kinds of transportation to improve traffic flow and parking. Objective two is to identify and implement citywide street and intersection improvements and initiatives to improve traffic flow and parking. Objective three is develop community education, reporting, outreach and information tools using change management principles and practices. Objective four is to identify and implement enhanced traffic and pedestrian safety opportunities. And finally, objective five is to facilitate completion of projects currently underway. Next slide, please. So for childcare and youth program, we have two objectives. The first is to increase access to childcare facilities. And the second is to address the community's needs for youth programming. Next slide. For wildfire, public safety and emergency planning, we have two objectives. The first is to reduce the risk and threat of wildfire and prepare the community for such an event. And the second objective is to update our emergency plans and policies. Next slide. And finally, for climate change, we have three objectives. The first is to prepare a climate mitigation and adaptation plan. The second is to plan and implement measures approved by council in the climate mitigation and adaptation plan, which will be approved approximately in June of this year. And finally, objective three is to consider adopting the county's disposable food service ware ordinance. Next slide, please. And that is, questions?
All right, thank you, Tara. Any questions from council? All right, see none. Crystal, any comments from the public?
There are no hands raised.
Okay.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, can I ask one quick question? Tara, possible, sorry.
Of course, Councilmember Rack.
Thank you. Tara, can you just tell me, so I know like in the council packet, there is some more specifics around the tasks and stuff. Is that going to be posted on the website somewhere?
Yes, it will. We plan to, once council adopts this, we plan to put it on the website immediately. And we usually also post on social media its availability.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it was a good process. It was my first time through this process and I think a good result. Strikes me that as a city, we have a lot of work to do in 2021. My one, my one question, Tara, is like as a council, how do we close the loop on this? You know, I, like, do we end up towards the end of this year with a report back on kind of the status of each of these? Just, you know, this is my first year through the whole cycle. So I'm just curious how we see these loops get closed as far as what was accomplished on each of those objectives?
Sure, happy to answer that question. We do present to council an update approximately every six to eight weeks throughout the year. So your first report will occur probably toward the end of April. And then we do a comprehensive report at the end of the year prior to the next strategic plan retreat.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Right. Okay, so from, you know, from my perspective, I just want to thank everybody on this process. I thought we tackled a lot, I think our, it was one of the shorter strategic planning meetings that we've had in recent memory. And it seems that, you know, a very thoughtful approach has been taken with milestones and touchpoints for receiving input from our community members at various, you know, commission meetings or council meetings or workshops and that type of thing. So I very much appreciate that. And again, as I'd mentioned, I was really struck by how this lined up with this community survey. So it feels like we're definitely headed in a good direction in terms of work effort and very ambitious plans and that need to be accomplished this year. So I know we'll have some robust discussion as we move forward. So at this point, if there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2021-
17.
A resolution of the City Council, the City of San Carlos, adopting the City of San Carlos 2021 Strategic Plan.
I'll second that.
Crystal, if you could please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, thank you. So this brings us to our next item, agenda setting. Items listed in this agenda setting, well, there's nothing listed here. But is anybody wishing to propose an upcoming agenda item? All right, so I would actually like to ask council if they'd consider setting an agenda item to receive an update from staff on the impacts of the recent eucalyptus street holiday decorations on the community and recommended actions. This was something that we had talked about at our strategic retreat. We didn't get a lot of time to do it and I do know staff has been working on it, but I thought it might be worthwhile for us to see if there's interest in taking a formal report on a future agenda.
I support that.
I'd support that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, thank you. So Jeff, if, if staff could take that feedback and, you know, bring back to some, maybe if you have any color to add to kind of where things stand at this point in time, because I do understand that there's been some work done based on feedback from community over the holidays.
Yeah, just a little bit of outreach and some internal discussions about how we might tackle the issue at this point. So I think probably about a month from now, we'll have a little bit more. Timing-wise, be a good time for an update from us and some discussion and thoughts from the council.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Much appreciated. All right, well, if there's no any, no additional discussion, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very efficient tonight.
You gotta, gotta bring it back a little bit, you know? It's like, we're getting to the chamber soon. We're getting to the chamber soon. All right, have a lovely evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Enjoy it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Nice.